Yeah, we certainly can. I think that it's probably fine to wait until the next meeting. I don't think there's, I think it's okay to do it with local law K, but it's all set to go. So I think either way is fine.
Okay, we can wait. Okay, so welcome everyone to the common councils Monday, November 2, caucus and work session prior to our meeting. Is President Ellis here? Yes, he is. JR, can you call out who's participating at this point?
Amateur mistake, amateur mistake. Present is Councilmember Joyce Love from Third Ward, Jenny Farrell, 13, Tom Holy, 15th, Michael Bryan, Richard Conti, Derek Johnson, and Council President Cory Ellis. And then from the staff, we have myself, Daniel Galecki, the City Clerk, and Senior Legislative Aid, Michelle Andre.
Okay.
We don't have a quorum, do we?
We do not.
It is, no.
We're not moving anything at this moment.
Yeah, it's our caucus. It's our caucus.
Hey Kelly, I'm gonna just double check with Darius about that resolution.
Okay.
And Sonia Frederick is moving in now, so.
And the thing is, we have so few things on the on the agenda, so we could do that. And also, if we want for for our caucus here, once we have this brief discussion, we could touch on some of the the budget conversation again, if we if you would like to, Jenny.
Sounds good.
Okay, so on the agenda, we've got the second 2021 proposed budget hearing. That's, we're gonna start with that. For approval of minutes from a previous meeting, we'll have the October 19 meeting minutes for approval. Under local laws, we've everything with health.
Just one thing on that, I think you need to move to amend the local law that just came out of Finance Committee tonight.
Okay, so local law K.
And the resolution.
We didn't amend the resolution, just local law K.
Just for purposes of aging, so we formally amended tonight, it ages and it comes up the next one.
Okay, so under local laws, we'll do that. Jenny, can you do the amendment to local law K? Just for purposes on the on the record. So that would be the only local law under ordinances. We've got nothing. And under resolutions, there are two. Mine is Resolution 102, 11120R. That's honoring the legacy of Edward Spurber and doing a street renaming for him. That that will be a pass or a vote. And the second resolution is 103, 11120R, and that's a resolution consenting to the creation of five full-time positions in housing and community development. That'll go to finance.
Ask a question, Kelly, on your resolution. Did you say that's a pass or is that going to committee?
It should go, it should go, it should go to committee. You're right.
Okay, because I thought you said pass, but.
I did say pass. I did. I did. Yes. Thank you. I stayed corrected. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Can I just ask quickly? I don't know that I've actually ever amended a law before. Do I just ask for its amendment? Notice it and ask for its amendment?
Yeah, to say I moved to amend and as amended request would it be held?
Thank you.
And then the minutes would reflect the the text of the amended version.
Okay, we're good. So and what we'll do is, under, moving on to resolutions, under resolutions hell, number nine, just, I did you get any word back on that?
Yes, he would prefer it this evening.
Okay, so resolutions hell, number nine, that'd be Resolution 910220R that just passed. Finance will be offering that for passage tonight also. And with that, that's that's the the agenda. And since we, hey, Richard.
Yeah, I know. Oh, okay, if that's the agenda, fine. Um, I just wanted to bring up a different topic, or if you have more to go, then it's fine.
No, no, I was, what I was gonna do is, there was some leftover stuff from finance that, whatever we want to discuss with the remaining time in the caucus, we can. So go ahead, Richard.
All right, so at risk of sounding like a broken record, on these BCA appointments, which is really frustrating again. So we now have additional new appointments that I guess were submitted today. And remember, the these appointments are supposed to be staggered so that a certain number come up every year, kind of like an even number come up every year, so that we can reasonably consider them. And because everything is, this got all screwed up, so we now have six appointments to be, out of a seven-member board, to be considered this year. Actually, within 45 days of whenever it came into the clerk's office, which is totally contrary to the intent. And totally, I mean, it you cannot reasonably have a reasoned consideration of nominations when you have six of them thrown at you of the way this is happening right now. And it goes back to the, really, the importance of needing to comply with the term expiration dates. And, you know, getting them at a reasonable time so that we can consider them. There's no, it would never intended that we would be considering six members of the BCA at one meeting out of a seven-member board. So I'm really concerned about that, and we really need to look at that. I'm also concerned, there's still a problem here with the staggering. Because again, it's supposed to, it's an odd number board, but they're supposed to be, you know, an even number coming up every year. So it should be two, two, and three. And the way these appointments are now structured, we have three appointments coming up in one year, one coming up in another year, and three in another. So it's like in 2021, there are three that comes up. In 2022, there'll be just one. And in 2023, there's another three. So there's, there's something off here. And I think it goes back to an error that was made a while back when Mike Apostle was reappointed, and he was given an extra year. And so one of these terms should be fixed, probably pages. Because she, I think, is replacing Mike, should probably be expiring in 2022. So you throw back the staggering, so it's a, it's an even number that comes up every year. So I still, there's still a problem with that. So it's just, again, my frustration in terms of, and we haven't even gotten to Historic Resources Commission, which has the same problem, because just about all of those members are serving expired terms. And I think there's a vacancy or two on that commission as well. So then, when, when, or if we ever get those, again, we're gonna be thrown maybe seven or eight or nine appointments at once to consider, which is not reasonable in terms of trying to give consideration. So I just, it gets me a little, I'm getting frustrated with this. Not to mention that we haven't had the the Living Wage Committee Commission appointed yet, and some other things. And then we're being attacked on the the violence prevention test.
Right, so, so Richard, let me say this.
I don't know, I mean, we can't correct it now, we're stuck with that, but we've got to, moving forward, we've got to deal with this in a serious way. You can't have a situation like this.
Right, right.
Is there any repercussions in law that we can do?
And why can't we, why can't we correct it? Why, what, what's the issue with with correcting it? The terms are incorrect.
Oh, it's just one term that needs to be corrected. You know, but that that doesn't change the fact that we're gonna have to consider six members. And, you know, two of these members basically have gotten free terms because they're, they were, they served beyond their expiration for three years, and now we're gonna reappoint them. I'm not talking about the quality of any of the appointees, and, you know, they're all fine people, but my frustration is procedurally and the intent in our advising consent authority, how this is happening, and that we really need to have a serious discussion with the administration. You know, I think we've been trying to look at, and Michelle's been doing a good job to try to get a handle on on the expiration of terms that we appoint. But we really can't continue this way where we have appointments like this. And I think also the Human Rights Commission, I don't know if there were two Merrill, which we don't appoint the mayor's appointments to the Human Rights Commission, but I believe there were two vacancies.
Correct.
Okay, which seriously impedes the ability of that commission to do its work as well. But those are not, we don't make, we don't, we don't confirm those appointments, we have direct appointments there. So it's, it's problematic. And we need to try to, you know, you can't let it continue, we need to to deal with it in some way. Also, as aside, you know, I long have been an advocate of reducing the size of the BCA from seven to five members. And with the USDO, it makes no sense really to have a seven-member BCA since they have significantly less responsibility, and that's been transferred over to the planning board. It really, you know, makes sense to think about when you have vacancies, whether or not we want to look at reducing the size of the BCA down to five members. Different issue, but I'm more concerned about the delay in getting appointments and people serving way in excess of their expiration and the need to really get a handle on that.
Gotcha. I just have a question.
Mike, Mike had his hand up first, Michael Bryan, and then Mr. Ross.
Following along with that, since these take, since we have a very short timeframe to act on them. Shouldn't we, I guess what I would contemplate is voting no on all of them. Until we can work out a solution so that we make sure all their appointments are staggered in a sensible way. And since the BCA doesn't meet every month, it may have no real effect on their workload anyway. That's my suggestion, because otherwise, I think we're complicit in a very sloppy way that appointments have been handled.
I would not vote any appointments down unless you want to vote that person down because you don't think that person is qualified. But if you vote a person down, then that person cannot be reappointed, the mayor has to submit a new appointment. So I would not recommend, I'm, you know, we're stuck with the way it is right now, I'm talking more moving forward. But I would not recommend you vote people down.
So Richard. Can't, can't we express our reason for doing that? And that he, she could, she could submit the same name again in a more reasoned way. And that person could, I mean, once they've been passed over for some totally different reason other than qualification, I don't think that bars them.
Of this language in the chart.
But at this, at this point where they were just introduced, would there be a way for the mayor to withdraw and resubmit and correct?
If she would do that.
That, that might, that will give you some time to consider ones, but I'm more concerned about moving forward in a lot of these, but I just.
Yes, but, you know, fait accompli's are, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know, I just gotta think about what I would do. And yeah, and again, I'm not condemning any of the people that currently sit on that, on that board. I know most of them. But it just seems that something is being slammed down our throat and in a not well-thought-out way, and we should have a way of expressing our displeasure and having it done right.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you. And Richard, thank you for bringing up that point. So as a possible solution, I don't know if this is something that's viable. I know our job is primarily to give oversight and administration is supposed to actually do their job, but would it behoove us to set up maybe a subcommittee under one of our standing committees that will kind of keep track of this so that we don't have this issue in the future?
Yeah, either Michelle or Danielle, I don't see Danielle here.
Because they do.
I'm gonna forge an email that I have been sending to David about all the appointments that is vacant or either expired for a while. So I've been doing that, I've updated all of the committee's appointment for the council, but I can't do anything about the mayor's committee.
Yeah, we kind of know, the ones that we have to confirm, I think we have a handle on those. All the ones that are direct appointments by the mayor, we don't necessarily have a handle on. So we know on the the BCA, the Planning Board, HRC, Living Wage Commission, we know what the other problems are there. Others like the CPRB or the Human Rights Commission, or I forget what else, where she has direct appointments, the mayor has direct appointments. We don't necessarily have a handle on that, although the clerk's office should be able to do that because I believe they would have to file their oath of office with the clerk. So we need to have a good handle on, on all of these, including the mayor's direct appointments, so we know what's going on.
Thanks.
Right.
Holy, and then.
Hold on just one second. I, I think the key is not necessarily having the committee to yeah, right, run through that stuff, it's getting back on track, getting us where we need to be, and then just staying on top of it. Because with the work that Michelle does, it, it's, it'd be easier to manage if it wasn't so out of control right now.
Well, I think, what's being said is we are on top of it, they're just not, they're not doing anything about it.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Times expired and nothing, so I guess for the council, if we don't have any power to do anything, if they, if they're, if we, if their term is elapsed, then what are we talking about? We shouldn't even have a conversation. If we cannot do anything about it, what are we, what are we talking about? If we're not going, as Mike said, if you're not gonna vote them down or sell them, send them back, then there's no discussion. We shouldn't even discuss it. Because what's the purpose?
Well.
They, they're not, they're not.
Just one second.
Like anything, anything, there has to be accountability. If we can't hold them accountable.
Yeah, well, someone has to be accountable, those were our advising consent authority, which we fought hard to get. And, you know, if we don't, if, if, you know, if we don't.
There you go.
If you don't, we don't get it, we lose it in some days. As I said, one day you're gonna wake up and it's gonna be gone.
Hey, thanks, thanks, Richard. Tom, Tom's been.
I'm sorry.
I know we brought this up before, at least a year ago, that some of the terms were expired. I remember that specifically. But one of the questions I got, are we, and again, I know the mayor makes the appointment, but is there like a call throughout the city to see, to get some new faces or new people involved in this? I know there's a couple of new people, but, you know, I didn't see any kind of notice go out that we're looking to fill this. I don't know what the requirements are for the the city to publish that there's openings on these boards. Does anybody know?
I mean, we put CFA's out for ours, but the mayor, I think she disappoints. I don't know what the mayor's process is for, for appointing her folks. But we put ours, we put ours out.
Think Mr. Nani had his hand up.
One more question. First of, I mean, I think the council president essentially just asked my question, answered my, what I was going to say, statement I was gonna say. You know, if you're really disappointed about the way this process is, how do you hold them accountable, right? Are you gonna vote no? And if we're not gonna vote no, we should be moving forward. But also in that vein, I want to say I have reviewed all the recommendations or the appointment the administration has given. These are some, you know, the best of the best in Albany. If you look at Richard Berkeley, you look at other attorneys that are gonna be on, you look at Jeff Quinn, you look at all the other appointees and recommendations. I think these are some of the finest people that we could appoint. So, you know, I, you know, I understand Richard's sentiments. But again, I don't think that we should put a committee together to remind administration that their expire, their appointees are close to expiring dates. So I just think that we should move forward. You know, it's good to share your sentiments relates to the administration being late on the appointment. But if you're not gonna hold them accountable by voting no, I think that we're just wasting our time. Thank you.
Mr. Conti has his hand up. And Michelle, can you, can I get sent an agenda? I looked and looked at my emails, I don't have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Can somebody just email me that? Thanks. Mr. Conti, did you have your hand up or?
Yeah, I just want to say, again, I, as I said, nothing to do with the the folks who are being appointed or recommended. I know, I know most of these people, and I'm fine. But, you know, there's, there's a principle and procedure that we fought hard to get. And if it is ignored, and we just say, well, you know, it's okay because we like these people or whatever, fine. I, under the charter, if you do vote a person down, then that person cannot be resubmitted. So I don't necessarily think it is, I'm voting nominees down, but we need to, this is an important issue that we need to get a handle on as we move forward. And, you know, we, we, as I said, some of us fought hard to get this confirmation authority, you know, a while back, under the original charter and the subsequent amendments that came a few years later. So I just don't want it, you know, I'm not gonna be here to defend it in a couple of years, but, you know, it's your choice.
Mr. Johnson has his hand up.
So Richard, I say, we, you brought the point up and made a valid point. Why don't we vote it down? Why don't we send a message? Because I've been sitting on this council for three years, and I haven't seen this administration respect any of the processes. You know, we get information late, and basically, I just feel like we get strong armed into a lot of things. So, you know, for enough conversation that went on, and for us to have the authority, this is a time to use that authority. You know, considering the conversation. Thank you.
Richard, does the charter specifically say that if we vote it down, they can never be considered again?
I have.
It says the language that if they're voted down, then the mayor will promptly, a reasonable time, submit a new nomination.
The actual language, I think you're referring to 301E, correct, Richard?
I believe it's the one that refers to the BCA and the planning board.
Yep, that's, that is E. In the event that the common council timely rejects the appointment, the mayor shall make a new appointment for such position, which shall also be subject to confirmation pursuant to the above procedure.
But it doesn't say that new appointment can't be the same person, particularly if we're articulating the reason why we're voting no. It just says a new appointment, not a new person.
Have Kelly and Jenny have, have all these issues been shared with leadership? I know Michelle's emailed, I'm sorry, shared with the mayor's administration. I know Michelle's been emailing with David, but have there been conversations about these specific issues that Richard is raising with the administration?
Yes, there have been, and of course, COVID hit and then everything got backed up. But we've had these discussions, and I can think of an occasion or two when we were talking about this, where they kind of alluded to the fact that, well, the person continues until, until there's a new appointment. So it was kind of a bit blasé. So, so we, I think we definitely need to take steps at this point to, to, to correct this. And based on what Brett, the language that Brett just mentioned, to Mike's point, it doesn't say that they, they can't resubmit the same person. Because in the end, we want to get back on track, we want to have them compliant and not usurping our authority, so.
I, I think that, you know, I agree with all that, but I think everybody has to recognize that these basically are volunteers. It's not easy to get people to serve always in these positions. And I think that's something we have to take into consideration. I don't like the idea of putting this to a vote. I think that there's, I think we should put some additional effort into getting the administration to get, get on board with our concerns that have been raised tonight.
But it has to be put to a vote, because if we don't vote, it goes into effect. So really, we have to speak about it, or just shut up about it.
Well, you mean if she doesn't.
Mike, when is the deadline for?
Hold up, hold up, sorry.
If she doesn't.
Forty-five days, we just, we got the letter the other day.
Is it possible for her to take back those letters and have that conversation? Because I think that would be the preference.
That, that's what I'd like, like to see, and we'll push for, and we'll push for.
Can I make a suggestion? One, one option to actually give us more time is maybe to take back the letters for the reappointments, since they will continue, I don't like it, so that we can focus on the new members that they want to appoint. And I think there are three new members that are being submitted here.
Yeah, but, but, but why, why can't they all be taken back? The, the.
That's not gonna change the fact that we have to make these confirmations and that there are like, you know.
But if you, you adjust their, their appointment dates and expiration dates.
Well, there's only one that's a problem, there's only one that's a problem.
There's a couple, well.
No, the, the resubmissions, I think, deal with everything. The one, there is, there is just one problem with one of them, there should be one, there should be two expirations in 2022, and there's only one right now. So that's, otherwise, that's the only problem I, I see with the, with the appointments, with the staggering. The problem is that they're all, they're all being, you know, given to us at once.
Right.
And, and they have to be because everybody who's being reappointed has expired terms.
Well, I mean, they're expired by quite a bit, right? So if we.
Yeah, Martin Daley is gonna get a free term. I like Martin a lot, no problem with him. But he's served one full term without being confirmed for reappointment.
Okay, okay, so just real quick, because we're about to have to start our meeting.
Anyway.
Mr. Robinson and Mr. Baller, and then, and then we're out.
So I, I think just voting them down for them to resubmit the names is just putting a Band-Aid on the real solution, the real, I mean, the real issue, the real issue is that they're not giving us these appointments in time. So my thing is, some of you are very more well-versed in the charter than I am. But is it possible for us to amend the charter that if they don't fill their vacancy within, are their reappointment within a certain amount of time that the council gets to appoint a person in that position?
We can, we can amend the charter to deal with some of this. I think some of that might need to go to referendum, so it's not an immediate solution. You could have some debate there, but if it, if it affects the power, yeah, if we, we, first of all, we can't appoint under state law, make direct appointments to the BCA or the planning board. So, but we can, under the charter, confirm the appointments.
Okay, Mr. Baller, and then we'll, we'll head into our meeting.
I'll be, I'll be very quick. I, I don't like the idea of voting down good people because we have an issue with the person who appointed them or the fact the administration, you know, didn't do this correctly. I think we need to address that issue and that, you know, vote down people that are looking to volunteer their time. You know, if I got voted down by the council, not because of my qualifications, but because there was an internal governmental dispute, I would probably not want my name to be resubmitted. Because, you know, that's just, you know, that's, that's not why people should get voted down. I would like to get, you know, get a list of where, you know, feelings or these type of renewals has been lacking and submit a letter requesting that they be addressed. I'm assuming the planning, the planning board hasn't had any renewals, I'm not sure we're back, backed up in those type of reviews as well. Let's put that data together, let's submit an official letter, and let's put it in writing and address it with the administration, but not at the expense of these individuals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baller. And that, that'll be at the top of our list for our upcoming. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baller. And that, that'll be at the top of our list for our upcoming, uh, leadership meeting. We'll, we'll, uh, visit that. So, uh, with that, um, Mr. President, I'll turn it over to you.
Do we have to exit this and go in?
That's gonna be my question.
No. Stay right in this session.
Okay.
We are now entering into tonight's Albany Common Council, November 2nd, 2020, Common Council meeting. Um, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members could unmute themselves so that they could respond to their names. Anani.
Uh, present.
Baller.
Yeah.
Conti.
Present.
Dushet.
Present.
Fahy.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Present.
Hawley.
Present.
Igo.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. And now, uh, could you put up the flag, Madam Clerk, so we can do our pledge allegiance and then have a moment of silence?
Is it working?
Thanks for working for me.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll move on to, we have a public hearing or second public hearing on our two, 2021 budget. During a public hearing, uh, any person who talks and can speak about the proposed budget uh, for 2021, uh, at that time, if council members don't like public comment period, council members would like to ask you questions, they can ask you questions on statements that you've made on, on the proposed 2021 budget. Um, with that being said, Madam Clerk, do we have any one people signed up for public? In public hearing?
We had three people sign up and they were sent the credentials and they are not in the waiting queue, waiting to speak. And they did not submit any written comments for me to read in the event that they were, um, unable to access the meeting. We also have one written comment from Marlon Anderson, if I may share.
Yes, let's do that in hopes that people get on. Go ahead.
Budget. This is a comment meant for the proposed budget. Can't say you weren't warned. Meeting after meeting, I warned about the state well running dry and it has. And as the mayor presents her election budget, essentially giving away the store in preparation for another run, you and the council who are preparing to run as well need to face the stark reality that we cannot afford to give away the store. This budget will be the test of true leadership because it takes true leadership to make the hard choices, the unpopular choices, the right choices. Can't afford to appease people or assuage people. This budget needs to be about simple functionality and anything less will be nothing less than an abandonment of the responsibility of leadership, period.
All righty then. And we have no one in the queue?
No, we also received three voicemail messages to our public comment line, but those messages were not, um,
On the budget?
I think they weren't related, so we forwarded them to the appropriate members who needed to respond.
Well, seeing that there's no one waiting in the queue, and I think it is, I just want to make sure I don't, I'm not trying to be quick with this, but I want to make sure. Seven oh six. Um, would council members mind if we wait a couple more minutes, just in case people are trying to get on? We don't wanna close it out just, some people might got on late. So we'll wait, we'll give it like seven, ten, close it out then. We, you know. And Danielle, can you guys see if anybody comes up? You can? Okay.
Yes, we're both actively watching.
Gotcha. All righty then. This time means it's fine. Since we have no one else waiting in the queue or trying to get in for a public hearing, public hearing, uh, on proposed 2021 budget is closed at this time. And now we'll move, uh, directly into our public comment period. Do we have any people signed up or in waiting in the queue for public comment?
There is no one waiting in the queue. However, we have a written, um, public comment from Marlon Anderson of Albany, New York.
Okay.
Public comment. So back in December, I came forward with a plan and a solution to address the gun violence in the city before it got out of control. For months, I came before you, warning you of what was to come and pleading with you to take action. And what did you do as a body or as a individual member? Nothing. And the result of your inaction and failure to do so is a record number of shootings and deaths in this city. And the worst part is you've still done nothing. All politics, no action. So I ask you, how many more will it take? How many more shots fired? How many more people dead? Take action. And remember, we could have prevented this with one ordinance pursued a year ago.
So we have no one else signed up for public comment, no one in the queue. So at this time, we will close out our public comment period and move on to approval of minutes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer the meeting minutes from our October 19th, 2020 meeting for passage.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes approved. Good, moving on to consideration of local laws. Uh, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend local law K and as amended, ask for it to be held.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Farrell. Now moving on to, uh, committee reports, uh, committee reports. Um, Ms. Farrell or Mr. Kimbrough, which one you'd like to go first?
Um, I can go first.
Go ahead.
I had, um, a lot of committee meetings on the budget and we have many more to come. Um, this evening, we had a committee meeting where we discussed local law K, um, and ordinance 90.102.20R with Gary Shonard, our treasurer, and both were passed out of committee with positive recommendations.
Thank you. And Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. The public safety, uh, committee will be meeting, uh, this Wednesday, uh, the fifth to discuss the police reform legislation. Look forward to the conversation. Uh, there will be public comment uh, at the meeting.
I believe that you're on Thursday, cause I think I have a committee meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, did I say when? It's, it's the fifth. I got the, the date right, but the day wrong.
Wednesday is mine, everyone. I can, I can do the same for Wednesday, but Thursday is the important public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Uh, Mr. Robinson?
I thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note that the Human Resources and Human Rights Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, um, at 5:30 to discuss increasing the minority in women labor utilization plan for contracts from 17.8% to 25%.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Can, seeing there's no other reports of any standing committees, uh, we're going to move on to consideration of ordinances, which I believe, Mr. Kimbrough? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, ordinances are held on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. And now we're going to move on to, uh, resolutions, our resolutions introduced. Uh, back to you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution 102, 111, 20, and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Edwin H. Spurber and naming a portion of Erie Boulevard as Edwin H. Spurber West.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be referral to council operations.
Thank you. Uh, continuing on with introduction, uh, Ms. Farrell for finance. I'll be having finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution 103.111.20R and ask for its introduction.
You. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council consenting to the creation of five full-time positions, which will affect salary totals for the 2020 budget.
And Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. There'll be a referral to the finance committee.
Thank you. And now moving on to resolutions held. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, noticed resolution 90.102.20R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council consenting to the elimination of one full-time position and the creation of another, which will affect the salary total for the 2020 budget.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
I think Mr. Nani might be froze. Is he? Oh, no, there is. I saw him say yes. Can't hear him though.
Baller.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Dushet?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Hawley?
Yes.
Igo.
Where did Joe go? I don't even see him. Huh. Move on. I don't think he's on. He might have got.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love. Igo's back. Okay, counsel.
Yes.
Love said yes. Mr. Igo?
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
And now I'll come back, yeah.
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rest of the resolutions on the agenda are held.
Do we have anyone in the queue for public comment since we, no? Okay. Mr. Kimbrough?
Hey, with that, uh, no further business, I move adjourned.
Second.
All right. Okay, meeting adjourned.
A half an hour, get signed on and it's over. Goodbye.
Bye, everyone.
Whoa, whoa, I think somebody, Michael Bryan raised his hand.
No, I was voting yes to.
I think he was voting to go do something else.
Wow, 17 minutes. That's awesome, I guess.
Hope we can all sleep tonight and tomorrow night.
Amen. Prayers.
Right.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.